Police and Fire Departments, Emergency Services, Transportation Departments, City and Counties, excuse me, City and County officials to keep our communities safe and secure. Seven years ago, Farmers Insurance commissioned Bert Spurling of Spurling's Best Places to Live to conduct a survey to find the most secure U.S. cities. We wanted to find out how cities had changed in their security methods to adjust to the concerns of their citizens, and we established criteria to help us identify the most secure cities in America. Amongst other factors, Spurling considered unemployment rates and changes, job growth, school systems, crime, disasters, and hazards, as well as extreme weather, to understand how each is handled. Excuse me? We used survey results to rank the top 20 U.S. cities and group them according to their size: small, medium, and large. We have prepared a short video that shows us what it means to be a secure city in terms of Farmers' National Surveys. I would like to play it for you now.
Health, prosperity, safety, and security are all desirable aspects when it comes to seeking a place to live, to work, or raise a family. According to the Farmers Insurance Group of Companies 2010 annual survey of the most secure U.S. places to live, Des Moines, Iowa is ranked as one of the most secure large metropolitan areas in the United States, populations over 500,000 to live in. The rankings compiled by database experts at Best Places to Live, Inc., took into consideration crime statistics, extreme weather, risk of natural disasters, environmental hazards, terrorism threats, air quality, life expectancy, job loss numbers, and 379 U.S. municipalities, and divided the communities into three groups: large metropolitan areas, mid-sized cities, and small towns. The city of Des Moines, having sprung from the vast Iowa prairie lands at the confluence of the Raccoon and Des Moines rivers, became the capital of Iowa in 1858, boasting a population of about 127 residents. The population of the metropolitan Des Moines area now numbers over 500,000 people and has become a vibrant area for new business development. Their extremely clean air and the long life expectancy of their residents helped earn them this outstanding large metropolitan area recognition for exceptional quality. Farmers Insurance congratulates Des Moines, Iowa, as well as their local government departments and their citizens for a great job keeping their cities secure.
So, as the video says, congratulations to Des Moines residents who are fortunate to have in their communities dedicated local government, law enforcement, fire, medical, and education leaders who work so hard and have earned the Farmers' Large Size Most Secure City number-two ranking. So, right now, I'd like to recognize the Farmers folks who are here. We have agents and district managers, employees who live and work in this community and are so pleased to be a part of the community. Thank you for coming today. And with that, we would like to present you the Most Secure Cities Awards.
The chief ought to be up here because she's one of the main reasons for us getting these awards. So, chief, if you would step right in the middle of the floor.
Could you get one with the Farmers folks?
Absolutely. Let's bring all the Farmers folks out.
You've had a nice turnout today. We'd love to...
Want more? We got everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
One, two, three.
One more.
Jane Heine, Joe Galloway, Friends of the Parks.
Jane, if you guys would come up. Now, we have another special presentation from the Friends of the Parks, so we'd like to bring everybody up. Joe, come on, you guys come up too.
Okay, everybody coming up. Those of us who are here today.
And Joe, who's the speaker today? Is Jane going to be the speaker?
It's always me. It's not always me, but anyway.
You're getting that'll join up.
All right. Is this sign? Yes, I guess it is. Okay, yes. We are thrilled to be here today. We are part of our 10 members of the Friends of the Des Moines Parks. We've been working very hard. We have some money that we are going to be giving back to the community today, an official presentation. We get our money through memberships, through memorials, through gifts, and we are thrilled to be able, and grants. We've been getting some grants, nice grants, for our swimming lessons. I would like to introduce Mr. Mayor first of all. To my left is Cindy Fenter, Kimberly Hansen, Dick Thornton, Jane Heine, myself, and Joe Galloway. And we do have some other members on our board. I just wanted to give those names. Amy Galloway is our Secretary Treasurer. Dr. Michael Eberle is our Vice President. Jeanne Bell, Suzy Malhop, and Janice Ruwan are also on our board. So, today what we're doing, I want to turn this check around, present it to you. We are almost up to 8,000 at $7,991 that we're presenting to our community today for things that are very important and that we have done. And so, we're happy to give this today, and we have a special program coming up in May. And Joe, do you want to hold your sign?
Did you get a good picture?
Okay. Joe, you want to hold your number up, and I'll pass the microphone to you.
Hey, Don, why don't you come up as well? I mean, this is going to the Parks, my friend.
And Ben. And Marley.
Marley.
Everybody, our staff. You know, anytime we do anything, it takes us all to get it done. It truly does. Another picture, Tom.
Well, we want to get everybody.
Okay, everybody get in here.
They're getting a good balance, Tom.
Are we a good height here? One, two, three.
Joe, you're up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seventy-nine, that is the number of days until John Crompton comes to Des Moines. Now, you've probably heard of Michael Jordan and basketball. Well, this guy is better than that. He is the world's leading expert on parks and how they can help communities, and he's coming to Des Moines for three days, May 3rd, 4th, and 5th. So, mark your calendars. You'll be hearing a lot more between now and then from us about that, but the Friends of Des Moines is helping to bring John Crompton to town. He's going to be here for three days, and let me tell you, even if you didn't care anything about parks, you would want to go see this person. He is as funny as Bob Hope. He is as eloquent as Bobby Kennedy, but it's not all show. He has the data to back everything up. He is really a worthwhile speaker to have here, and we are just so excited. We're counting down the days one by one. Right now, it's 79 days to go, and when he comes here, it's going to be one of the most memorable days in our Parks history. So, look forward to it.
All right, and for our Parks Department and everybody in Des Moines that enjoys that and appreciates the amenities, how many, 78 Parks now?
Seventy.
You got 72?
Three, two, three, doesn't which one you count.
Okay, well, we want to count them all, but thank you all for all the work that you do, and we know that from the Board, to the Friends, to the citizens, we all appreciate all the work that you guys do, including my old neighbor over here. So, thank you so much. Let's give him a big hand. We'll start our City Council meeting in just a few minutes.
Here.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Grease.
Mahaffey.
Hensley.
Meyer.
We have a forum.
All right, Item Two is authorizing the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency to negotiate with Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity, Inc., for disposition sale of 1811 Jefferson Avenue, Board Communication Number 11-065. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Any discussion by our Board? If not, somebody give me a motion to authorize. It's been moved? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Item Two passes. Item Three, authorizing the City Manager to release mortgage and related security instruments for the filing pursuant to the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program. A, Andrea Brownell Atkins at 201 East Creston Avenue, Board Communication Number 11-067. B is Jesse Killen of 205 East Livingston Avenue, Board Communication Number 11-066. And C is Andrea Stumpf of 9 East Creston Avenue, Board Communication Number 11-068. Anyone in the audience to speak about the releasing of those mortgages and related security instruments? Seeing none, could we have a motion? It's been moved to authorize the release of those mortgage and security instruments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Item passes. Item Four, setting date of hearing for the filing amendment to the Municipal Housing Agency Annual Budget for the current fiscal year ending June 30, 2011. That hearing will be February 28. And B, proposed Municipal Housing Agency Annual Budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2012. That hearing will also be February 28, 2011. Is there anybody in the audience to speak about those hearings? If not, could we have a motion to set those dates? It's been moved? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? The Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board now sits adjourned. Thank you. Prior to our start of the City Council meeting this evening, we're going to have a message moment from our own council member, Bob Mahaffey. Those who would like to participate with us, we would ask you to stand at this time.
Father, we ask your guidance as we deliberate the agenda tonight. We ask that our decisions be made to benefit our city and also to keep in mind the benefits of our residents. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
We'll call to order our Des Moines City Council meeting for February 14. Want to welcome everybody here to our Valentine's Day celebration, and I'll ask the clerk to quickly take role.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Grease.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
We have a forum.
Item Two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Item passes. We've approved the agenda. Item Three is approving the consent agenda tonight. These are Items Three through 69. There are a number of items that I need to give you some information on. Item Five, Councilmember Moore and the mayor vote no. Item 10, 11, and 21, Councilmember Coleman wishes to speak. Item 36, Councilmember Mahaffey has registered a conflict of interest. Item 47, Councilmember Moore has registered a conflict. Item 66, Councilmember Meyer votes no. Item 67, Councilmember Moore wishes to speak. And Item 69, Councilmember Hensley and Meyer both vote no. Are there any other items on the agenda this evening that anyone would like to have polled for further discussion? Otherwise, we will vote the balance as one action item unless someone from the audience or additional items from the council are polled individually for further clarification or discussion. Yes, sir?
Sixty-three C.
Okay, sixty-three C. And you're here to talk about two, probably?
Yeah.
Okay. That's our mistake. You had asked to speak on that, so appreciate that. Okay, Item 63C. Any other items?
I'll move the balance.
Balance has been moved?
Seven yes.
All right, that takes us to 10, 11. And you want to put 12 and 21 on there, too?
Yes.
Okay. 10, 11, all these items actually are approving supplemental agreements, number two, to the Jackson Basin Pump Station Professional Services Agreement with H.R. Green Company for design services for modifications to the design of the Jackson Basin Pump Station to increase the level of flood protection based on the Corps of Engineers River Regulated Flow Frequency Study, and that plan and agreement is not to exceed $17,500. That's Council Communication Number 11-091. 11 is approving the supplemental agreement, number four, to the Court Avenue 11 is approving the supplemental agreement, number four, to the Court Avenue Water Street Sewer Separation Professional Service Agreement with Vinscher &amp; Kim for design services for modifications to the design of the Court Avenue Pump Station to increase the level of flood protection based on the Corps of Engineers recent study that was released on the regulated flow frequency. And that contract is not to exceed $94,384. Council Communication Number 11-092. Item 12 is also approving a change order to Beerman's Electric Company for additional work to a pump station emergency power generation. Phase one, that's not to exceed $51,566. That also, I think in some fashion, is related to our flood protection. Council Communication Number 11-082. And item 21 is the authorization to submit a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program application, Public Assistance Grant Program request to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for a proposed voluntary hazard mitigation acquisition buyout and demolition project in the Four Mile Creek area and other 100-year floodplain areas. Council Communication Number 11-087. Mr. Coleman?
I brought these up because I called the mayor today, and I think everybody at this table, the world should know as well. He has far more expertise in this than I do, and I wanted to ask him about it. For a lot of things, the numbers that we look at are often larger than this. Seventeen thousand for one, ninety-four thousand for the other. But the mayor and I had a pretty good conversation about the Corps of Engineers recalculation of the waterways that run through the heart of our city, mainly the Des Moines River. But as you see today, we're also talking about Four Mile Creek and the potential buyout of properties along there. It has been, I guess on one hand, somewhat reassuring that nobody sounded the alarm on the city over this news. But it was also a little disappointing that we haven't communicated, I think, nearly as well about how important this is for the future of our city, the businesses, and homeowners that are in potential flood areas, as the Corps of Engineers has now calculated, costs that might be shift to these property owners for higher insurance rates and other things. It's a scary, very significant proposition for the city. And I would just like a little conversation. Frank got the city manager on the phone as well, and we talked a little bit about maybe how we can educate the community and our business owners a little bit better than we had before. I'm not being critical of anyone, but we obviously haven't touched accord with many members of the media, because this is a significant issue. Not only could it be real costly for the city of Des Moines, but what we're learning should affect public policy, not just at the city level, but more importantly, at the state level, in planning and land use, how we manage things. And it seems like it's fallen on deaf ears, the drastic changes that have happened water-wise in our communities. Mayor, we talked a little bit about different strategies, but why don't you talk about the issue first and maybe lay it out for people?
I think the important thing, Mr. Coleman, and thanks for bringing it up, is that everybody understands that there are changes that have happened climate-wise across this country. And I have had the opportunity to speak a few times in front of Congress and also on a congressional committee, served on a congressional committee as the only elected official to represent, quite frankly, anybody. The rest of the folks were generally state officials and federal officials and a couple of emergency folks across the country at the state and the county level and a couple of city folks. But it is something that needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed with federal policy. It needs to be addressed with state policy. It needs to be addressed with counties and cities and towns and all the areas across this country. And I think that our point here in bringing it up, and Mr. Coleman bringing it up, is I think that we together as citizens and business owners and elected officials ought to work very carefully together as we look up to the state for guidance on how we handle some of these issues. I think that we have talked long and hard for the last number of years about how much the geography of the state of Iowa has been changed over the years, and to a point where Iowa is now recognized as the most changed geography of the 50 states in this country. Presettlement times, 85% of the moisture that fell from the sky was absorbed by trees or on the site where it fell. And today, while 85, about percent of it comes from rural ag, the balance comes from incorporated areas, I would tell you that only 15% of that water is absorbed on-site today. So I think that we all have to come together and look at policy on how we contain it, what we should do with that water. It's a resource. There's lots of places on this planet and in this country that are looking for freshwater resources. We have an abundance of it, sometimes too much, and we have to decide how we're going to deal with it and make sure that we keep it as good fresh drinking water source and make sure that it is not polluted and that we also watch the runoff, because there's a golden rule sort of of water flow goes, you don't want to do anything to the people downstream that you don't want the people upstream to do to you. So I think that let's recognize that, and I think that we as a city can at least lead and help facilitate that discussion that needs to take place and bring everybody to the table, including the Corps of Engineers and FEMA and HUD and all the state and county and local officials around this state to open up this discussion. But I do believe that we could have a little further discussion or workshop or something where we have a little fuller presentation of some of the issues surrounding all these items that I'm sure are going to come across our agenda, not only now and tonight, but certainly these are just planning issues tonight. At some point or another, somebody's going to decide that we need to do a few things a little differently, and so we're going to have to have additional funds to actually do the projects. So I think that having the discussion makes sense. So, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Coleman?
Not really. You know, I was looking through the agenda for one other thing. We're trying to tack this. I know our engineering staff with Jeb and Bill Stowe and all of his folks and Public Works and the WRA, Rick's office. Tonight on the agenda, if people didn't notice it, but we've hired a lawyer from St. Louis, I think, Mark, is that right, that specializes in this? So I didn't even pull off item number 48, but it's all tied to this. And I think if we really want to see economic development happen in our city and for our neighborhoods to be safe, we're going to have to have a short and long-term strategy on this that's going to have to come together really quickly. And I know that the manager is putting all the things in place and working with Mark and the rest of his legal team to make sure that happens. But I'd love to see it on a workshop soon, and maybe there's elements of what we see at the workshop that we could bring back and take five or seven minutes at a city council meeting and run through it when more people are watching us on TV. I think we can corral, as the mayor says, real public interest in this if we do a good job of educating people about its implications, the recent recalculations from the Corps. So I'm very interested in moving forward with dedicating some of our next workshop to it and at the next council meeting, or at least within two council meetings, being back with a little presentation to the community about what this means.
Mr. Manager, did you want to make comment?
Mayor and council, your comments are really right on target here. This is a significant issue for the city. I think what precipitates this discussion this evening are these items on the agenda. 10 and 11 are additions to some engineering contracts that we have to look at two projects that you already let the bids on that are underway today, but because of the new data, we have to go back and look at some new design calculations for both of those projects. So should council approve these items, then that work will go forward. But these are the first of many. And the suggestion from the mayor and Mr. Coleman is right on target, in my view. It is an important issue. Council in the community, both need to understand the implications of all of this, and we need to get busy on the actions that are necessary to correct and address these issues on a long-term basis. And frankly, we will in fact need the help of other governmental units at the state and federal level to address these issues appropriately. So I very much appreciate you bringing it up and giving us the opportunity to bring back to you a fuller explanation of the issues and our thoughts as to how to approach it.
You know, while we're talking about that, I see four mile listed here, and I want to compliment Phil Wagaman and staff for what the efforts they've done on the buyout over there of the trailer parks. They've made a wonderful presentation, and they've had a very good audience. Of course, they're all interested in how they're going to come out on this. It's just taken too long. We need to continue to pursue, try to get this resolved.
Mr. Coleman, could we have a motion on those?
I'll move. I think what I polled was 10, 11, 12, and 21.
All right. I want to make a comment because it doesn't look like it made I have an additional item on 28. Aye. We did get a communication from Mary Gotchak, who advised of her resignation from seat two of the Des Moines Waterworks Board of Trustees, effective immediately, and to add Leslie Gerhart to replace her. And so I think we probably need a vote on that.
I'll move. Great addition.
Also on item 30, 30A, there was a communication from the Historic Preservation Commission advising that there are three vacant seats on that 10-member commission. A lot of these need to reside in the neighborhoods specifically. So we've been looking. I have a recommendation to appoint Patricia Berry. She lives in the Owlshead area at 451 29th Street. So it is my recommendation to appoint Patricia to the Historic Preservation Commission, seat one, for a three-year term commencing March 28, 2010, to expire March 28, 2013.
I'll move.
That takes us to 63C. 63C, Ashley was requested by Mark Van Gundy of 1506 Thompson Avenue to speak regarding a word of a bid for sewer combination machines. And that is item 63C, which was O'Halloran International, James O'Halloran President, for three replacement catch basin cleaner trucks for use by the Public Works Department Division for $1,147,482, subject to financing through lease purchase agreement. Six bids were mailed. There were five received back, and that was Council Communication Number 11-060. Yes, sir?
Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Mark Van Gundy, and I work for, does this need to blow up? I work for Elliott Equipment Company out of Grimes, Iowa. Also, I'm a resident of 1506 Thompson, which is right here in Des Moines. I've been promoting this type of equipment to the city of Des Moines for over 17 years. Usually when I do something like that, it's approximately a demonstration about every six months. So if you calculate that out, it's about 34 demos in 17 years, this type of equipment. During those demonstrations, not once did we ever have an ineffective demonstration. Most of the demonstrations were very positive, and we even had recommendation from the operators in the field to management that our equipment was not only qualified, but well worth the value for a purchase whenever time allowed, of course. We have users with this equipment throughout the Midwest, over 150 of these piece of equipment actually in the Midwest and around Des Moines, cities such as Grinnell, Newton, Cedar Rapids, Dubuque, Sioux City, Sioux Falls, Omaha, and even Kansas City. What I can't do is meet this, what I have here is a copy of the specification, and I've put together thoroughly, I think, and hopefully easy to follow. If I could get these in your hands, you could follow real quickly with me? Is that possible?
Sure. Go ahead and hand them out.
There's seven of them. I hope that's the right number. And when you open that up, what you're going to see on one side is actually two pieces of paper, and one is actually the specification for the city that we filled out. The other page is a two-page. It's actually our answer to the advantages of this piece of equipment. And then on the other side, you're going to see a couple pictures I'm going to reference to real quickly. And again, I hope it's quickly enough for you. I'm not going to try to stay here all night for you, plus you won't allow me to. But this specification, when I look at it, you know, I'll be the first one to admit, I cannot meet this specification verbally. There's just no possible way verbally I can meet this specification. But performance-wise, we can meet this spec probably 98% of it. And I guess what I would like to show you, first off, you're going to hear somebody maybe talk about a debris body, which I discussed with them, the city of Des Moines. This first picture is actually our debris body, right here, the camel debris body. And we have a top entry where debris flows into our body. We actually are offering a 10.8 cubic yard to fill material, which calculates out to about 21 80 gallons of liquid that this unit can hold. Actually, we have a float ball, which is the red ball at the top. You see that right there? Okay? That takes up a little space. That's our float ball. That's for protection for the machine to shut off. It does take up space. But when it's all said and done, we can absolutely positively load 21 and 80 gallons at 10.8 cubic yards. The apparent high bidder, if I'm not mistaken, is bidding the other page of equipment, which is the blue page there. The spec called for 12-yard material, and they are offering a 12-yard machine. Now bear with me. It's not what's on the outside, it's what's on the inside. If you look closely enough, what I've done there is they have a front entry, which means it goes into the front. And if you look right below that, there's a bulkhead below it, which takes up spaces alone as well. On the backside of their tailgate, that's where their float balls are at. There's two of them, and they hang pretty low to the ground. Now, I'm not saying this is exact calculations, but physics tell me there's a possibility of that stuff taking up space. When it's all said and done, I was pretty conservative here on these numbers. And when it's all said and done, I truly believe we cannot get a gallon load on these guys. They won't tell us how many gallons. If you think of your living room without any furniture in it, and you had company over, and you had a lot of people come in, you could stack them in. But once you put furniture in there, you can't get as many people in there, but at the same time, it doesn't change the dimensions of the room. And that's all I'm saying, that I believe that our unit will hold as much, if not more, of a spec. One other thing you might hear about is a subframe, low center of gravity, safety about weight lifting up in the air. I'll be done with that. Do you have anything else?
Can I just ask a question? You're talking about this unit here, debris unit, I think is, is that what you call debris unit?
Mm-hmm. Debris body, correct.
Is this stainless steel? I thought that was the issue, was whether or not it was stainless steel versus...
No.
So is that the issue?
If you look at your specification, I tried to, the debris body, which would be under number one, I don't believe there's anywhere in there that says stainless steel. What number two says the body is half, quarter-inch corrosion, abrasive, resistant, extend steel.
So are you claiming the old...
We meet that. All those yeses are for us.
Okay. But are you, so you're claiming that you've been denied the bid because you're...
Certain... Certain, I say verbiage, but when it comes down to it, like the water tanks alone as well, you asked for aluminum water tanks. We're supplying polyethylene, which is used by manufacturers. Ninety-nine percent of manufacturers of the world today use polyethylene. You asked for 1,500 gallons. We're still giving you 1,500 gallons. It's just with polyethylene. You asked for a 10-year warranty. You still get that with us. All I'm saying...
What's the price differential?
We're $27,000 low per machine. There are some things we can't do. There are a couple of things that we can't do. There's three things that we just can't do. It's, we just, I guess maybe we refuse to, but we just don't build. And one's a, on the back here, I have it, one's a valve. They asked for a silenoid valve to automatically shut off. We can't do that. We use our manual valve. Actually, at ground level, a guy would have to open the valve itself. It's because the subframe is so high on this other unit here. You know, ours is a lower-profile one. There's the high one. Their valve is on their debris body is so high up, they can't manually get it. They do have a silenoid valve on it. We have a lower center of gravity, so it makes ours, number one, a lot safer when dumping. We're not taking that dump way up in the air with a lot of weight. Where you can see that that high-profile one, there is a more cause for, to be worried when you're lifting something like that high up in the air. When it comes down to it, we, and the machine, the machine that they're recommending, that is not a bad machine. I'm not saying that at all. It's a very good machine that, that's the high bid. It is a very good machine. It's just I feel our machine meets the performance. It's just as good in many aspects. It's even a better machine, in my opinion. But if, they're going to hear about maintenance. You may hear about maintenance. There is no maintenance record on a machine because the city has never had one. But I was just asked that maybe that, we turn around, we look at some of these existing cities that own this equipment, 150 cities around the area. We haven't had a machine in this town for 17 years. And this is the first time that, you know, we've been a low bid figure to even be looked at, and I just want to get that point across. One other thing I'd like to talk about is a water pump. They asked for a certain type of water pump to deliver the water into the sewer line. There's only one manufacturer that builds that water pump, and it's this one. We offer a triplex pump. This is a single piston pump. We give you a triplex pump. It's still delivering the same amount of water at the same time, 80 gallons a minute, 2,000 PSI. We meet that performance. And you already have three of these, four of these water pumps that we're offering you. You already have them on your existing trucks. They're in service now.
Okay. Have you kind of reached the end of your presentation?
Yeah, I sure have.
You're running way over.
Yep, I sure have.
All right. And then, if anybody has any questions, maybe I remain available and we'll...
Absolutely. I just thank you for listening.
You bet.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I think first I'd like to have staff quickly give us a response, and we'll let some other folks step up. Brian, do you want to, or Alan?
Mayor, members of council, Alan McKinley, deputy city manager. We have identified here for you the seven areas of noncompliance, six for the, one on the far right, which is a Vaccon body, and the other was Camel, which was the gentleman that just spoke. We've also provided the specifications there in the second column. The recommended bid award is to the middle column, all in white. The, some of the things that we were talking about, it was the water tank itself that was aluminum, was in our bid specifications. The discussion has been around operating efficiencies and safety in particular, and I'm sure Bill Stowe would be, wanted to come up and discuss those areas, primarily in the hose reel controls and operations. We have had experience as it relates to the nonaluminum tanks in our fleet, not really getting a discussion about cost. However, we have had more downtime with the nonaluminum tanks in a prime-time period when our crews are out working and trying to get, obviously, the number of linear feet completed in the field, especially in the summer months. Bill would like to speak regarding operational issues, and then we have Brian Bennett here as well from the fleet.
Mayor, county, members of the council, Bill Stowe, Public Works. Just to point out a couple of things to you that may help in your deliberations here. And I do recognize these are difficult issues. You've heard a lot about specifications and performance. Let me point out a couple very basic issues. We have seven like units, seven units of two brands, Vactor and Vaccon, not the brand CamelVac, which Mr. Van Gundy was talking about. But we have seven of units of two other brands. These, as your bid tab in front of you will show, are about $350,000 units each. So this is a huge financial commitment. And from a performance standpoint, very important when you have a $350,000 investment in a single vehicle, having it available is very important. It's ironic that the mayor and Mr. Coleman talked at some level of detail about wet weather and flooding and earlier agenda items. These...
Are you saying it was amazing we knew something in detail, or just...
I would not mean to imply that, Mr. Coleman.
Did you mean coincidental?
It was happenstance that we were talking about that on the same night. This is a schematic of the type of unit we're talking about. These are large tank trucks. In the Des Moines context, they're actually silver and orange, about $350,000. They are absolutely instrumental in keeping our city sanitary combined and storm systems as free from obstructions and as free-flowing as possible. And wet weather circumstances, when these trucks are in your neighborhood, it's a sign, first of relief, that something's going on that will clean the sewer lines and allow things to move around, but it's also a sign of distress. So these are extremely important units to have up and available, sitting as you are, seven folks trying to wade through what's required here and what isn't, and how to view the varying differences in cost. You'll note, as an example, the difference between Vactor, which is the staff recommendation for purchase, and Vaccon is roughly $37,000 a unit. The recommendation to you is the more expensive. But as Alan showed, the only brand that was in conformance with the specifications was, in fact, Vactor, the more expensive. From an operating standpoint, we view that investment and capital cost for the more expensive piece of equipment to be wise, because our experience in operating Vactor and Vaccon is that the less expensive brand of the two that we have experienced with is far more expensive to operate and maintain. That is, the $37,000 that's more expensive in the Vactor brand that's recommended to you is quickly made up by the higher operating expenses and availability of the Vaccon brand, $74,000 in difference over its life cycle. Lot of detail. These are seven areas, as I recall, that they, the only brand that met specification was Vactor, not Vaccon nor Camel, Mr. Van Gundy's brand. At the end of the day, I would hope that you look to staff as having the expertise and the experience to sort through this. And by staff, I'm talking about not only the public works staff. I heard a claim that our operators prefer CamelVac, as an example. First of all, they've never used CamelVac. And second, when a salesperson talks about what our staff prefers, I would hopefully view that with a great deal of concern about its accuracy. I'm confident that to a person in our staff, Vactor, which is the recommendation before you, is the preferred one between Vactor and Vaccon. It is more expensive in the short term. It is less expensive in the long term. It is far more available for use and far more effective in use. And to remind you, as I'm sure Mr. Godwin will have asked, the requirement under Iowa law is low responsive and response-ible bidder. We have specifications here. There was only one responsive bidder, and that was Vactor, which is the staff recommendation to you tonight.
Mr. Stowe, could I ask you a couple of quick questions? As you were putting together specifications for the bid and noted here the other bids, at least out of these three that are placed up here, the noncompliance issue, have you have had some experience with the aluminum versus the plastic containers?
We have, as an example, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So you, on that point...
Aluminum is preferred.
Because we've had failures on the plastic?
That's correct. And one of the issues is not only the failure, but then the time to bring them back into service.
I understand.
Once we have that failed.
But you have had, you have had failures.
We have that failed.
Okay. The direct drive from the transfer case is...
Versus belt drive, as an example.
You have had...
Or hydraulic. Our view is that direct drive is far more reliable, Mr. Mayor. In each of these categories, if you were to go down them, we view the specification as being an indication of the more reliable requirement.
All right. That's what I'm just trying to make sure that we all have a good understanding and feel for the reliability that you have, in fact, experienced the belt drive situation and have had significant failure with that kind of a...
We have. And as an example, besides reliance and reliability, Mr. Mayor, if you look at the second from the bottom, hose reel controls, hose reel operations, as Mr. Moore will know from his experience around these kind of equipment, this kind of equipment, the positioning of controls relative to traffic, very important. These units are out in traffic on a regular basis. How they are operated by people on the ground, standing out in traffic is very important. We view the specifications as having the greater protection for our employees as to where it is that they're actually operating these complicated units while on the ground in the middle of traffic.
And I know that the other bidder is not here, but you also like that direct drive better than hydraulic?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
From a reliability standpoint, again.
And you like the functionality of the, having, being able to do horizontal and vertical on the vacuum boom as opposed to just doing horizontal?
Yes, sir. Each of these, again, with the exception of the two involving reel control and reel operations, are essentially issues of reliability, and those at safety. There is certainly an argument that can always be made, that the other option is preferred. In our view, that does not square with our experience nor our operator's experience.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
I've got a couple of questions for Bill. Under the page 19 that was submitted to us, telescoping rotating hose reel. Entire reel assembly shall rotate 270 degrees on large diameter ball bearing. It looks like Mark indicated his would be 180 due to safety design. And then on the next page, number 11, it says, "Control shall be accessible on both sides of the hose reel, allowing an operator to work on either side of the unit for safety purposes." Mark says no, but it's due to wireless, not available. So...
And Mr. Moore, there was some...
Is this telling me that it's going, if you went with the Camel, it's going to put them out?
In traffic.
In traffic.
Or, in our experience with Vaccon, we actually made modifications from the provided original equipment manufacturer's specification that takes it out of service and costs us money. So, much like a discussion that you were involved in several months ago involving remote controls for some other equipment in Public Works, Mr. Moore, obviously, sometimes you can reach a safe conclusion, but it's more expensive and takes the equipment out of operation. But in our view, again, this is, this is pretty hazardous work to begin with, as you know, in the middle of traffic, under some very adverse conditions, maybe 3 o'clock in the morning on a Sunday when it's raining during a high-flow circumstance. We want to optimize the safe operation and controls and how these pivot.
So you're wanting them directly in front of that truck so that they're not out to either side?
That's correct, Mr. Moore.
As far as that, any information in the state, you're also on your...
Thank you. Thank you.
...up there in the state, and too, we do do a direct drive transfer case, and we got a mark.
Sir?
I'm sorry.
I appreciate your comment, but we're trying to get back to staff. If you have other information, please forward it to us, or we'll bring you back up for clarification. We'd rather not have testimony from the audience. Go ahead.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Bill, question. I wondered, these other locations that have used so many of these, have we talked with them and see how their experiences have been?
Mr. Mahaffey, honestly, we have not. I think Mr. Van Gundy talked about 150 or 200 communities in the area. As you know, Iowa has 900 communities, but I'm aware of incorporated communities. You know, this isn't a popularity contest. Frankly, it's a function of our experience and our use in this facility. We have had a Camel unit at the WRA, for which I have responsibility. A little bit different unit than what you see here, so it isn't as if we have intentionally tried to shut out a particular provider. I will tell you, to a person that I'm aware of, in terms of their operators, Vactor is the preferred unit among our staff.
I saw some hands, maybe a couple other speakers. Yes, sir. Come forward.
Mayor, council members, my name is Jeff Firestone. I'm with Mid Iowa Solid Waste Equipment Company, and we are the low bidder. We are the representatives for Vaccon. Currently have four Vaccons and three Vactors, as Mr. Stowe indicated. Vaccon is the number one selling sewer truck in the United States. It's not like this is some off-weird machine that isn't accepted. We're $37,000 per unit low. If you actually did talk to the operators without any coercion, coercion, the operators do like the Vaccons that they're running currently at the city. I'd like to address these issues up here real quickly, if I could. Plastic water tanks are very accepted in many, many different industries. It is true that on your 2002 Vaccon units that you currently have, there were some early failures of water tanks. In 2005, Vaccon went to a new supplier of the tanks, redesigned the tanks. Those tanks have been under warranty. They have a 15-year warranty, and they've been replaced. All the new tanks of the new design that have been replaced since 2005 are, have not had any failures since then. Any of the new tanks that we've replaced have zero failures. So a plastic water tank is very accepted in industrial applications. All of the things up here, this is a proprietary bid spec. There's only one bidder, only one manufacturer that can meet this bid specification. And so we're all, like Mr. Van Gundy, we all have to take some exceptions, because it's just written around a certain way of building a truck, and not everybody builds them that way. In speaking with the sewer foreman or the sewer superintendent, they've had no performance issues with the Vaccons. And the fact that we are noncompliant to the bid specifications is, it's impossible for anybody else to meet these bid specifications. What you had here wasn't really a bid, if you throw out everybody that doesn't meet every specification. It's just an open invitation for somebody to pick your pockets of $37,000 per truck. In most instances, when Vactor and Vaccon compete, we're head-to-head pricewise. Here, we're $37,000 low. So I guess we can talk about those specifications up there if you care to, but our trucks perform equally as well as the Vactors, all day, every day. And I don't know what else to say.
I appreciate your comments. Anybody have any questions?
I don't know if I have a question, but just a comment. I guess it, it's troubling to me, you know, just trying to listen to this. And I agree with Mr. Stowe that, you know, we're not the experts. We don't have that background. But I hate to hear the comment made, I don't care who it's from, when they claim that the bid specifications are written and just so that there's only absolutely one piece of equipment that can comply with that. I mean, why don't we just hand it to them? That is a concern I have, when we have them so specific that nobody else can comply with it. And I don't know, I understand there are some that we have to do that, but I'd like some discussion about why, and this, I mean, I understand the differences here, and we're hearing a lot of different he-said, they-said type of things, but that is troublesome to me. me when we have that comment made regarding bid specifications.
Further to that, why invite Mr. Van Gundy or our company to bid? We were sent a bid packet and asked to bid. If our unit isn't acceptable at $37,000 low, how could it ever be acceptable? This bid specification is riddled with proprietary things. And just, let me just take one little thing, for instance. Mr. Stowe made a great presentation about the rotation of the reel on the front of the truck needs to be 270 degrees, and that the rotation of the VACONS that he currently has is dangerous. If it is dangerous, you shouldn't be driving them. You shouldn't have them on the street if he really believes that. But there's two things that this truck does. If you want to boil it down, it sucks and it squirts. It has a vacuum, and it has a jetter. Do I have to stop?
You're running a meeting.
Brian?
One more minute?
Is that okay? One more minute?
Yeah, sure.
Two things that the truck does, it sucks and it squirts. The hose reel on the front has to swivel to get over the manhole, to let the hose down the manhole. And, and Mr. Stowe pointed out that our hose reel does swing out and cross out into traffic if you wanted to operate it in that position. It's not made to do that. It's made to swing out so that it can get to a right-of-way or over, over a grass strip next to the road, so that the hose reel can get over a curb and out where you want to work it. But I'll point out that the suck part of this truck, the vacuum part, can go anywhere. There's nothing that limits it to the front of the truck, so the operator has to make good decisions. The operator can't run the vacuum out into traffic and operate it. It's the same as he can't run the hose reel out into traffic and operate it. That's just one thing on this specification that makes no sense whatsoever. And why the Public Works Department specifies something that ridiculous is frustrating to me, and it really...
Is there a pre-bid meeting on these items?
No. There isn't a post-bid meeting either, because I asked to discuss these, and I wasn't allowed the opportunity to discuss the exceptions that we took at $37,000 low. Mayor, councilpeople, thank you very much for listening to me. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else make any comments? Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, Eric Thorson with Trans-Iowa Equipment. We are the VACOR distributor for Iowa. Listening to Mr. Gundy and Mr. Firestone, you know, stating their case, I can completely understand where they're coming from. Being a dealer of multiple products, I've been sitting in the situation they have, too. I know the city has bought camera systems where it was preferred to Mr. Van Gundy's camera system because of other reasons and safety and so on. I didn't get a chance to sell that camera system to the city of Des Moines, but I moved on. But I do want to comment on a couple of things here, reference to meeting specification. I can't help it, but I listened to, for example, Jeff Firestone from Mid-Iowa Equipment. He makes the comment, "It's proprietary, we can't meet this." That ain't necessarily true. If you look at some of the exceptions that they took, and that's public knowledge, high dump was one of those on there. He took exception to high dump, 60-inch high dump. There's a reason why the city wants it. Gives them more flexibility with that piece of equipment when they, when they contain hazardous materials and they want to get rid of it. He took an exception to it. If you pull up any state contract, Minnesota state contract, anybody, that's a $14,000 option, and he took exception to it. That's 14 grand right there in difference. So, where do you cut these, what I'm trying to say is, where do you cut off an exception to compensate for being lower price? The other thing, too, is the water pump. He said there's only one manufacturer that makes that water pump. There's only one manufacturer that uses it. It's not a proprietary pump right now. Years ago, it was. It had a patent on it. That's been on for many, many years. But other manufacturers that chose to use a triplex, quadplex, if I'm saying that correct, style water pumps that they use. This water pump was designed to do sanitary cleaning. They buy a water pump off the shelf, put it on their truck, and build a truck around it. So, where do you draw that line? The other thing is transfer drive. Every one of them have the option to do transfer drive. We believe, and there's no doubt, it's the most efficient way to drive that blower. It's the most dependable way. It's the most expensive way. Hydrostatic drives, belt drives, so be it. Now, Mr. Van Gundy may have had transfer case in his bid, may be the case. Again, debris body. Ours is 12-yard volumetric. That means liquid. Can challenge that all day, we can prove it. The other thing, too, is Mr. Van Gundy took a 10-point yard debris body, took, did take exception, he took exception, really. He said yes and changed the number, but he could have exceeded it and went 14 yards or 12 yards, which would have cost him more. So, he chose not to meet that spec. He could have exceeded it. So, I can understand your argument, but I can also tell you, well, we can, I could go on and on, many of them, but that's just the point I wanted to get across to you. And I can understand, I can understand their feelings, but I had to get that point out. So, and I could go on and on, but I'm not going to. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who wants to speak on this item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and, any comments from the council regarding this? Any referrals? Any motions?
I have a motion. Two parts. I would like to move the action that's before us as presented, acknowledging the, the issues that came before us, but moving forward with the purchase of the equipment as recommended by staff. But I would further like the city manager to look at the process, identify ways in future bidding that, that we ensure that specs are written in a way that allow for the greatest competition for our services that safety and reliability and quality would allow.
Can we split those?
Sure.
Prior to voting, I just, I'm a little more concerned than that. I would, I'm concerned a little bit that we didn't have a pre-bid conference on this and, and then a follow-up post-bid conference. I think everybody needs to understand what happened and where we're going and why we're going that way. And while we have a, certainly, it sounds like a, a good recommendation by staff, I am somewhat concerned that it's nearly, you know, $120,000, maybe a little less, $111,000 savings that could be had by, actually, it looked like a VACON was a low bid. I don't, I don't know that that's true, but, because I haven't seen all the bids, but at least the three that were presented. I'm just, I'm uncomfortable, not with, with staff, because I think, maybe, but they have their, their reasons, but I certainly am somewhat concerned. I don't know how these, these trucks operate, but we're, we're up here trying to manage money and trying to figure out how to do things for the lowest possible bid, and, and it looked like there was a number of bids that were underneath, but in a very tough spec. So, I'm, I'm a little concerned with that, so I'm, I'm not sure what your, your motion is, Mr. Moore.
I was asked to split it. I would move, what number is it? 63C. Is that what we're on?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I'll move 63C as recommended by staff.
And I'm voting no on this because I've had a longstanding policy of not voting when it appears that there's just one bid that's been responsive, and I, based upon the comments here tonight, that would be the rationale for my vote no on this. I think there are some questions and issues, and it's, it's a, it's a big deal. I mean, we're talking about $1.2 million almost here.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no on this, just due to the issue that I think there should have been a post-bid meeting to explain this to people and give them a chance to tell their side of the story. However, I will say, if it's a safety issue, money shouldn't be involved in that, so I'm gonna vote no on it.
Well, I'm gonna vote no for the same reasons Frank has had concerns about no pre-bid conference or no post-bid conference, and I think those should have come about.
Three yes, four no.
Next bid, Ms. Coleman.
Before we leave that one, though, because I don't want to leave this, I want to make sure that we have a Plan B.
I need some direction.
Yeah, we need, I guess, I would be, if we could have some ongoing discussion regarding the process and have some meetings with these individuals, I'm not, you know, they may come back and we have more information as to making us feel more comfortable to vote at the next council meeting, but I'm not 100% sure.
Maybe refer it back to the city manager and staff to clarify, and then go back over the specs and see where we go with the recommendations.
Well, and are there issues? Do we have a timing issue? Are, you know, are there some deadlines or things that we have to meet here? I'd just like to know from this.
Mr. Mayor and council, could I just inject one point here, and that is that if you, if you vote to reject this, I gather from your comments that you want more information about it. I hope, I hope the implication of that isn't that you're not willing to reconsider if we get you more information, so...
So maybe we want to refer it back to you, continue, and not take formal action on this until it comes...
That would be much, yes, I would appreciate that, and give us a chance to, to get back to you with more information about this. I must say, I do believe the recommendation before you was the right one. I, I understand and am very sympathetic with the concerns that you've expressed about the process, the nature of the bidding, the lack of the pre-bid conference, but I do believe, in my heart of hearts, that the recommendation before you was a good one, and I want you to have all the information necessary before you make a final decision on it. So if there's a way you could...
So my motion would be to refer it back to the city manager to continue the discussion, not to vote down.
But you already voted once, so you may have to rescind that if you want to make an alternative motion.
Somebody on the prevailing side will have to do a motion to reconsider.
I'll do that. So my, do we want to reconsider, or just?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to reconsider the vote taken on 63C. Okay, now, motion for 63C would be...
Ms. Hensley, could I just interrupt and let Ellen say a word?
Yeah, Ellen McKinley, deputy city manager. Just to clarify, in the bid specifications, that does provide for an opportunity for any bidders to contact the city prior to the opening of bid to discuss any of the bid specifications. There were none prior to the bid opening, as I'm aware of. Then there were conversations with two of the individuals that were no, that were considered not to be compliant, has met with, either by phone or in person, with fleet, our fleet administrator, or myself through email to discuss many of the issues that are being discussed today.
Ellen, these bids are good for another two weeks. Is that correct?
I don't have, Brian, is that... Yes, they are.
Okay. Can I suggest the comments you just made will reduce to writing should council approve the motion that I think is about to be made, and we'll get it all back to everybody in a minute, so you can see it.
Thank you. So my motion would be to refer it to the city manager's office, to continue discussion, to review the process, talking about what Chris's second motion was for future projects, and to have it come back to the count, the meeting on the 28th.
We'll do that all for the meeting on the 28th, and if... So your motion was to rescind the disapproval, keep it open?
Yes.
With consideration to the next bidding, we'll come back with more information.
Correct.
Seven yes.
All right, I'm sure that's perfectly clear to everybody what just happened here, and so we're gonna get a recommendation back from the city manager and staff following in two weeks. Is that correct, Ms. Mayor?
Correct, yes, sir. The 28th of February.
And we'll hopefully get this issue resolved at that time. It's 5:28, we now need to move to hearings, and so we will do that at this time. 76 is the termination of a lease and management agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Central Iowa.
Hearing's at 72, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, 72. On the intent to acquire properties for recreational and trial purposes, trail purposes, and authorize acquisition of the necessary property interest from various property owners for the Grayslake Connection Trail Project, Council Communication Number 11-086.
I'm happy to move this item, and just pleased to report, we made our first fundraising call on this Wednesday afternoon, and it's moving forward. CDS Global has made a contribution of $10,000 to kick it off, so we'll continue with that. I know we have several others that are working on some more significant private dollars to come into this, but there's a lot of interest, and they want to really put it on the fast track.
Anyone here to speak on this item?
Are you CDS?
No. Mayor and city council, Jay Peterson, I'm an employee for Mid-American Energy Company.
Okay.
And not, not really concerned, just to make everyone aware, there is, one of the points by the old railroad right-of-way where this, where this trail would go, there is a small electrical substation. There's also a buried 16-inch natural gas line, one of the gas lines that serves downtown, and there's also...
Pretty significant. That's pretty significant.
It is. There's also a distribution line and also a electric transmission overhead line. So, there's a lot going on in that, on that little piece. Now, you know, that can all be overcome, it's just safety concerns, and we, only thing we'd be sensitive to, I believe, is grade changes, so...
Sir, can I suggest that we have engineering staff here and park staff, both who are familiar with the project and would love to talk to you, and we want to be sensitive to all the issues you talked about, and if Jeb or Don or others could talk with you for a bit, I think that would be helpful.
Sure, you bet. Okay.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your input. For those that, staff, this gentleman would like to talk to engineering, I think, and those that are familiar with this, this project. So we have a vote underway, but...
Jeb, could you just visit with them for just a second?
Seven yes.
Item 73, on the conveyance of 1416 and 1420, 22nd Street, and 1315 Harrison Avenue to Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity for Development of Infill Housing, and the Forest Avenue Urban Renewal Project, $16,500. Council Communication Number 11-084. Anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'll move.
Is that yours? No, it's Ellen's. Seven yes.
That may be that little area out there. Items regarding properties at 4600, 4610, and 4720, Southwest 31st Street. A is to amend the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Land Use Plan, future land use designation from planned business park to low-density residential. And B is a hearing to rezone the properties from M3 Limited Industrial to R180, one-family residential, to restore properties to a legal-conforming use status. And C is the first consideration of the ordinance above. And D is the final consideration of the ordinance above the waiver as requested by the community development director, and it requires six votes. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on item 74, which is regarding the properties at 4600, 4610, and 4720, Southwest 31st Street?
Seeing nobody, I'll move items 74A through D.
75, this is, looks like better news than the last time we discussed this. In the City Hall Window Replacement Project Resolution, improving the plan specifications form of contract documents, engineers estimate designating the lowest responsible bidder as Strong Tower Construction LLC, doing business as Coop Corporation. Benjamin Feen, CEO, 400... Tower Construction LLC doing business as Coop Corporation, Benjamin Feen, CEO, $421,414, council communication number 11-094, A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Anyone in the audience to speak on this item?
I'll move 75, 75A.
Mayor, do we have anybody here that could give us just a brief rundown of where we've bid, been on this? I've had a couple of calls from people concerning this issue, and they thought that, and I think correctly, that we'd, we're going to do this once, and the state said, no, the windows weren't correct or something, and.
Mr. Moore, Jeb Brewer is the, is the person, he's out in the hall talking to the gentleman, he's coming back in now. I can tell you a little bit, this was a rebid, it does the windows in City Hall, it doesn't do the buildings, the big windows on the second floor of this building, but all the others, it was a cost reduction measure. Hopefully, there's enough money left in the grant that we can do the police station as well. And Jeb, I'm sure could add additional information to what I just said.
Just, just a brief rundown is where we've been on this and why it was rebid and.
And not to, Jeb Brewer, city engineer, not to rehash it, but I think Mr. Clark identified that we did have to go out, the original bid was quite a bit higher than our estimate, and we went back and looked at those bids, and the large windows out in the great hall were where we had some significantly higher costs. Those windows are actually a little bit newer than these smaller windows, so we broke that out, bid it, we thought we could also get some efficiencies, that's more some general work, this is a little more typical window type installer, so we bid that, and then the goal is to get the rest of the police station, that'll be coming out shortly, that way, we should have an, if our bids are favorable in the police station, we should have enough grant money to do all the windows in the police station, and then all of the small windows and doors in the city hall, that should maximize our energy savings, since these are single-pane windows, they have some issues with the seals, they're very leaky windows, so we're getting a lot of heat loss through them.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do we have motion?
I moved 75.
Okay.
Five.
Hallie.
Seven yes.
All right, that shows we complete the hearings at 5:36. Takes us back to item 67. Item 67 is, Councilmember Moore, on the amending Chapter 74 of the municipal code regarding 2011 golf course fees as amended. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. After our last council meeting, I received a copy of the contract with C Corp, I just wanted to see how, I was still confused a little bit on how we determine what our payments are, but going through the contract, I found that there's an agreement between the city and the contractor about building a new maintenance facility this year at Grandview Golf Course. It does stipulate in here that the city contractor agreed to establish a construction schedule prior to the start of each calendar year, and I was just wondering where we're at with the agreement on this maintenance facility. Is there going to be any input from the citizens of the city? Where's, where's it going to be cited, that kind of stuff, and hopefully, it'll be comparable to the maintenance facility out at Wayland, if not better. I don't know if that one's lead or not, Don, but we should be at least looking at lead on it.
Mayor, county, and council members, Don Tripp, Park and Recreation Director, thank you, Councilmember Moore, for letting us know this afternoon you had these questions, gave me a chance to look at the contract and ask a couple of questions myself. You're correct in that Exhibit D, that's a part of the contract with C Corporation, requires him to make certain capital improvements. I can provide a copy of that, there's actually several, including improvements at Wayland and Grandview. One of the improvements it stated is that in year two, he shall begin the process towards building a maintenance facility, and there's actually a budget in there of $250,000. I found out he has started that process, he's made contact with our building department and submitted some initial plans to them. To get to your question about the Wayland, I understand that he's used that as, as the template for his building design. I also have found from legal, and I thought this was the case, but they confirmed with me today, he has five years to do, to make these improvements, so he had to, had to begin that process, this is, this is the beginning of his second year. We'll track that, and yes, as he gets to a point where there is some design detail, we'll have a neighborhood meeting and let people take a look at what it is that's being proposed. I would think that would be sometime yet later this year. There's a whole series of improvements here, we do have the ability to negotiate with him changes in the actual dollar amounts, that's important to point out, because one of the things that I suppose is possible, we're going to wait and see what bids come like, come in on the clubhouse here in the next month or so, that if, for some reason, we wanted his participation in that clubhouse bid, we may negotiate some change in this agreement with him, but the bottom line is, is he's obligated for a bid amount of contributions towards capital improvements at both Wayland and Grandview, and of course, that'll be enforced.
Don, the location, is it down toward East 33rd on the maintenance shed?
Well, I think that's what he's thinking at this time. Yeah, I think that's what he's thinking at this time. We did a temporary facility, as you might recall, a couple of years ago down there, and that seemed to work out pretty well, but I think it's preliminary to say for sure at this point, we won't look at all alternatives.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I'll move 67.
Are we doing final passage, 67, 67A?
Yeah, I'll do 67 and 67A.
Seven yes.
All right, that now completes the consent agenda, we'll go to item 70, which is from Councilmember Brian Meyer to discuss the following. First, he wants to discuss the lilacs, and then we're going to discuss the Southside Sculpture at Southwest 9th and Bell.
This is the only time you hear me talking about lilacs and sculptures. Okay. As I understand it from speaking with the city manager's office, the, there was some issue with the lilacs in Ewing Park and, and being able to fund those out of some CIP dollars, because they weren't trees, I appreciate that getting taken care of. I did wonder, I want to speak a little bit about the Ewing Park plan and the lilacs at some point, and I, I thought maybe, Mr. Manager, if we could get a workshop on this, because I think it's really interesting to see what's going on and how we can improve that area down there, and possibly include within that workshop, a, a look at how Ewing Park is going to be interfaced with Easter Lake Park and the improvements being made on the streets going from Indianola Road, so that's that. Secondly, the Southside Sculpture Park, I told the people working on that, that I bring this up and just refer this to the city manager's office to see if they can get a, a lease on that corner to, to do the welcoming center that they want to do with the sculptures, much like the Southside Sculpture Park at McKinley and Southwest 9th, so. Those are my, my two motions for 78, and B is to possibly do a workshop and to refer both of them to the city manager's office.
The same guy's doing the, the one here that did that one, what's actually, what about the 10th or 11th?
Chuck Mather. Phil Barber.
Phil Barber, Chuck Mather.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they need help with city staff to get that, the ball rolling on that.
Okay.
Yeah, they need a lot of assistance.
Seven yes.
All right, item 71, from Councilmember Moore, to speak regarding changing our style of election from runoff back to primary.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm speaking from experience on this, and I'm sure that Hallie would want to weigh in a little bit, because we're the only two that have been through this. I totally agree with what the council's idea was to possibly save money on it, but what I found was, when there is a runoff, it puts you a lot later in the year, it's a month longer, it runs you through a major holiday, which is Thanksgiving, and just thank God that we had a snow hit, it was a day, the day after the election, I believe, that it hit, it was rather heavy snow. I've spoke with Brian, Councilman Meyer, a little bit about this, and I'm just wondering if there's, he, he informed me, it sounds like there's four different kinds of elections we can have, and I'm wondering if we can have the runoff type, but go back to where the, the first election is in October, and if nobody receives a 50%, then you have the runoff election in early November, instead of doing it in December.
If I could comment on that. I did talk, when I talked to Skip, I, I seem to recall, and I think the best way to do this maybe is to refer to the city attorney, I do recall being given several different options that we could do for the city elections, whether it's four or three, I can't remember, but Skip, I do recall that, and, and, is that something you want to do to, to sort of refer this to the city attorney to get options, or?
Yeah, absolutely, but I thought now's the proper time to bring it up, we've got four people that'll be running for election this year, and I think we, that Hallie and I were just a little bit lucky this year with the weather holding off, we could have had a heavy snow, you know, we've had them before Thanksgiving. Campaigning around a holiday is a real tough subject, and actually, just, it could take a week out of your campaign time, and I just, since I'm not a free election, I think it's appropriate time to bring this to everybody's attention, see if there's a different way we can do this a little bit earlier in the year for everybody.
And hopefully, some way, improve turnout. I think these are the most important elections that occur that affect people in their homes and their businesses locally, and sometimes they pass over them and certainly vote in state and federal elections, but these are the ones that really affect their lives day after day, so better turnout is always, I think, a good idea, get citizen input and.
I'd like to refer this then to the city attorney and, for report back at the next council meeting.
If that could include information, just historically, for the last few elections, on the cost of the elections, because that was really the, the issue behind what we did, is it was, it's about $70,000, I think, and that was a major budget discussion that we had, would have been last year or the year before, whenever it was.
Yeah, when we did this.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, it, it was a budget initiative, I think the savings was $60,000 when you have an election, but I, if I understand the intent behind your motion, Mr. Moore, it is to look at other options, not necessarily to spend more money, so maybe we can find a way to continue to save the money, but to afford the additional time that you.
Yeah, I was, I'm not sure you actually saved any money on that last one, because you had to go.
What I, what I was hoping for is that we could have the runoff-style election, but move it back a month earlier, both elections, if you're going to hold them, so that you don't get into late November and early December.
I think what, I think what you're getting at is, I didn't mean to cut you off, Skip, but I think, you know, you, you had the November election, then you had, was it a December runoff or January runoff?
Correct.
And what you're saying is, if, if, if we went back to the primary and then the election system, that if you got, possibly if you got over 50% in the primary, then you wouldn't have to go on to the general.
Exactly.
If that was an option, I don't know if that's legal or not, but.
Yeah.
Well, that's what you have now, and that's where the savings accrue, and so I, I think there's maybe ways.
Well, it's, it's, it's the timing of it, the first election's November 2nd, or it was for us, somewhere around that date, and then the runoff was in December, and Frank's brought up a good one, is if we ended up having a blizzard on the December election, what would have happened to the turnout? And I know Public Works would have done their darndest to get everybody to the polls, but I think people would have stayed home.
But aren't there some restrictions also, and this is where legal will have to give us some guidance as to timing and when you can have elections in conjunction with school board elections, and the amount of time that has to elapse between those elections?
It is controlled by statute, Code Section 376, and it uses the word "shall" in every instance for the regular city election, for the primary, and for the runoff, which leaves little wiggle room.
Okay.
But I'll report back and give it to you in detail.
But I'm assuming if we held primaries before in October, that that could in fact be a deciding election, if we chose to, if somebody gets over 50%, they could not have a.
My preliminary reading of the statute is that the date for the regular city election is set as the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November in the odd number of years, that is a "shall." The primary shall be four weeks before that, the runoff shall be four weeks after that.
But the question is, can you just have a general election? Do you have to have a runoff, too?
Do you have to have runoff? No, you can have a primary or runoff. There are, however, Chapters 44 and 45 of the code, which allow for nominations by different means, and those may figure into your thinking, but I'm going to have to brief you a little more thoroughly on them.
Could you brief yourself on it as well?
Yes.
All right.
So did we vote on that?
Not yet.
So what's the motion?
Refer it back to the city manager and the city attorney.
Okay.
Seven yes.
All right, that now takes us to item 76, which I tried to read earlier, but it was corrected, termination of the lease and management agreement with the Boys and the Girls Club of Central Iowa for the Logan Community Center effective February 28, 2011, council communication number 11-072. Anyone to speak on this? We kind of went over this before.
Mr. Mayor, I'm here if you have any questions.
We have a question answerer in the audience, does anybody have any questions?
If not, I'd move that we receive and file and refer it back to the city manager and staff to see what kind of agreements we can come up with for the use of the Logan Center.
Not another library on the east side, right?
What's that? No, we don't need another library, we have a nice one on the east side.
Only if we get lilacs in my ward.
Like he has two in his warden.
Are, are we?
Yeah, we do, northeast. Phil will over and use it if you want to, Brian.
Are we voting on the termination of the lease?
They've already notified us that they're.
Okay.
Seven yes.
Actually, I think we're not terminating, I think they are. Item 77 is Americans with Disabilities Act ADA settlement agreement between the United States of America Department of Justice, DOJ, a nice group of folks to work with, and the city of Des Moines, council communication number 11-098. Any questions on ADA compliance? Can we have a motion?
Move.
Seven yes.
Item 78 is amendment to the lease agreement with the Capital Center LLC for office space at 600 East Court Avenue, extending the lease until August 31, 2011, $12,305.42 monthly, council communication number 11-071. Anybody in the audience to speak on this?
I'll move.
Kristi?
Seven yes.
I could have a motion to adjourn his city council and reconvene his board of health. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same. We now sit as board of health. Item 1 is approving the legal department receipt with court action seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at the following locations. A is 1123 Riverview Drive, fire damaged main structure, administrative removal, and B is 342257 Street, it's a garage structure. Is there anyone to speak on either one of these items? We have a motion. Been moved? Need discussion? Push your buttons.
Seven yes.
Have a motion to adjourn.
One, can I just make an announcement about our meeting tomorrow morning?
Yes, please.
We have a meeting tomorrow morning up at the Capitol with Governor Branstad, would really encourage all council members to come, if they can, and it's room 103, 7:30 at the Capitol, and it's open to all council members, we expect a large crowd, so, and we did pass around items that will be discussed for your information.
What time?
7:30.
7:30. So anybody that can. So anybody that can attend?
Chris is 103.
On the first floor, it's the Supreme Court. It's right outside the rotunda on the east side.
North side.
North side on the east.
Side west of the hall.
On the east side, isn't it?
West side of the hall. West side of the Supreme Court.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Opposed, same. We now sit adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you, everybody, for attending.